I mean, I don't, I don't have anything to send it.
I know.
Yeah.
This is.
Well, I thought when I was on P and Z that we made sure it was always gonna be just one lot. It was our one to split it.
Cause I think it was zone. I E zone R two, which will allow a single family, well, I can't remember, have to look it up.
I don't remember what it was on, I was thinking it was just our.
I think it's our, that's four driveways on the, the entrance.
Yeah, just like a little tiny thing.
Okay, well, that's why we have, I'm glad you're here so we could ask that question, Jordan.
Hey.
We're gonna put one house on.
Soon as they're done, we're ready to start.
And he needs the seven.
Okay.
Is that what the base are?
It doesn't matter.
I mean, he, he don't.
Hey, are you guys done down there?
Yeah, we're done, thank you. Thanks, Jordan.
All right, we'd like to welcome everyone out, we'll call the meeting to order at seven thirty-two. Uh, we'll go ahead and start with a pledge, we'd ask Michael Anderson if he would lead us in that.
Who's next? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we'd ask Earl if he would offer a prayer.
Glad to hear. Dear heaven and fathers, we gather here tonight as city council and citizens of Shelley and our other guests, we ask that you watch over us, help guide us, make the right decisions for the citizens of Shelley, and watch over our first responders and people that are not here with us tonight, that are abroad protecting us and taking care of us, ask this in your name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen, thank you. Okay, so, real quick to start. Um, we are, we're gonna approve the minutes and building permits and stuff like that, then we'll go into the public hearing for sewer connection fees. Now, so everybody understands that and hopefully everybody that's watching on TV or on the internet, this is for a connection, this is not your monthly fees, we're not raising the monthly fees, we're trying to uh, be able to come up with enough money to upgrade some of our sewer lines inside the city. So, so we're raising the connection fee, so that's what that hearing is for. The second one on the agenda is Fox Hollow or Fox Crossing, probably a lot of you are here for that. That is not a public hearing, the city council, we had a public hearing with the P and Z, we've got all the testimonies from every person and all the minutes and everything in advance, so that we could read through it and we have to base our decision off of what that is. So it won't be, so it's a spectator sport on the second one, so, just so everybody understands it upfront, okay? Uh, so council, if you don't have any questions on the minutes, I would accept the motion to approve, approve consent agenda items for A, B, C, D, and E.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve consent calendar items for A, B, C, D, and E.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve consent agenda items for A, B, C, and D. Let's see, did I say E? E too, if I didn't say it.
Aye.
Kim.
Aye.
Adam.
Aye.
Earl.
Aye.
Four ayes, okay. Next, we're gonna open up the, the public hearing, and since we have our attorney here and we're paying him big bucks, I am going to turn.
You love saying that.
That, yes, I love saying that, we're gonna turn the public hearing for the sewer connection fees over to him.
All right, did, uh, did mayor either you or did anyone wanna offer kind of an explanation of that beyond the one that you already provided?
No, the only, the biggest thing people need to realize is, it's just, when, if you build a new house, your fees are gonna go up to connect to the sewer, if you're already on the sewer, your fees aren't going up. So, it's just for new construction, so.
Okay, with that introduction and, and certainly the public can ask questions as part of the hearing process, this is the interactive part of the, the meeting, and so, um, just to get kind of a quick overview, um, we'll first hear testimony from anyone that wants to speak in favor of the post sewer increase. Uh, after that, we'll, uh, if there's anyone that's neutral, has questions, maybe comments that could go either way, we'd like to hear from you, and then finally, we'll hear from people that, uh, would wanna speak in opposition to the proposed increase. Um, and we'll, we'll try to manage it, I, I don't know, can I get a quick, quick idea of who's here for this that would, is intending to participate in this agenda item? That helps us manage the hearing a little bit, does anybody? Oh, well, then I gave that spiel for nothing. All right, well, it, it'll probably be a brief hearing then, but nonetheless, now you know the, the rules, so it'll be, it'll be brief, um, we'll go ahead and, and open the public hearing then, if anyone wants to speak in favor of the pro- proposed sewer connection fee increase. You do, all I would ask is that you, uh, state your name and your address for the record, okay? Um, not wanting to rush anything, you folks can come in.
We, we saved you guys a front row seat, if you wanna come in.
Um, if there's anyone that has questions or, or wish, kind of, uh, neutral comments that they'd like to share with the council as part of the hearing on the fee increase? I'm using extra words just to extend the time.
Trying to drag it out, aren't ya?
Just, well, just to make sure that we're not cutting anybody short here. Um, seeing that there's no one that wishes to speak in fa- in favor or neutral on the proposed fee increase, oh, yes, sir.
Ed Crapo, one sixty-eight South Falls, I just have a question, um, what are the current fees and what are the proposed?
Well, I wanna make sure I get these right.
They're right, they're right on the memo.
That's what I'm saying is, I, I hope I got that, so.
It's going from sixty-four thirty-nine to sixty-six thirty-nine per ERU.
Okay, did you hear that, or do you want me to, okay, so, um, the connection fee is being proposed to, to be increased from six thousand, six hundred and, no, six hundred, six thousand, four hundred, sorry, thirty-nine dollars per ERU to six thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars per ERU, so it's a two hundred dollar fee increase, yeah.
Okay, and to an- to interrupt him just for a second, most of that goes out to Erwa. The city of Shelley in the past has kept five hundred dollars of it, but we're increasing our fee, or we're gonna keep a little bit more so that we can catch up on some of the sewer lines that we need to catch up on. So that's why they increase, so it's not going out to Erwa, it's staying in the city.
This in, this increase.
This increases.
This'll keep us out of, so we will keep a thousand, fifty-six thirty-nine will go to Erwa and we'll keep a thousand.
Earl raised their fees, so we raising ours to keep up with everything.
Uh, anything else, Mr. Crapo?
No, sir, thank you.
All right, um, all right, does anyone wanna speak in opposition to the fee increase? Any testimony? Well, it's been a lively debate and I appreciate everyone's participation, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing now at this time and deliver the to- the topic to the council for deliberation and if they choose for a decision tonight.
Can they have any questions, comments? I, I feel like, well, you know, I feel like we need to do it because we've gotta catch up on some of our sewer lines that need to be upgraded.
We have no choice.
I agree. So, Kim, anything?
No, we've been and just, we discussed it at the last time.
So, I need a motion if you get one approved.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the increase in the sewer connection fee from sixty-four thirty-nine to sixty-six thirty-nine.
I'll second it.
So moved and seconded that we go ahead and approve the sewer connection fee from sixty-four thirty-nine to sixty-six thirty-nine? All in favor, or in favor, okay?
Mayor, there's a resolution that goes with that, you need to have a copy of that, resolution number twenty-one oh three, which basically is the warning to, to veripot or to list what is considered an ERU, so that resolution needs to be adopted also.
Okay.
And do we do that by to suspend the reading?
No, that, no, this is a.
This is a resolution.
I'll make a motion that we, um, adopt resolution number twenty-one dash zero three, resolution concerning sewer connection fees.
I'll second it.
So then moved and seconded that we adopt resolution twenty-one dash zero three, uh, raising sewer connection fees, all in favor? Or in favor, okay? Okay, should we go to that, BJ, you happy?
Yeah, I think that hearing went great.
Okay, perfect, all right, next on the agenda is Fox Crossing. So I'm gonna start and everybody can, like, and I'm, when I say everybody, it's the ones up here, nobody out there, unless we ask, uh, a department head or an engineer a question, so. So I have gone through our comprehensive plan a lot, our subdivision plans, I went through the minutes, and I've actually went and drove through several subdivisions and took pictures of houses that are affordable housing, and, uh, I've, I've found out some very interesting things, so, for example, um, some of you have heard of South Point, uh, it's a nice subdivision up in Auto Falls, well, in South Point, the houses are all nice homes, some of them are on close to half acre lots, I found out. And right at the end of South Point, in the same subdivision, they've made a little U shape and they're putting affordable housing in this U shape, um. So, it doesn't fit with the rest of the subdivision, so there was a person just outside in their yard, kitty corner from this little outcropping that they, that they're doing. So I pulled over and I asked them, I says, hey, how do you feel about, you know, living here and stuff, just conversation? And they said, well, we love it, and I said, how do you feel about the houses that are gonna be built over here? And they're like, well, we feel like we were not told the truth when we bought our house because, uh, we were under the impression and she didn't know if it was in their ordinances or not, but they were under the impression that the homeowner association would not allow that. So, I don't know who the developer was, I don't know anything about it, I just, it was interesting to me to find out a little bit about that one, so then I went and looked on Nineteenth Street, uh, that Mr. Hicks had, uh, gave us the address for, um, he invited us to come and look at the inside, I didn't go look at the inside because the inside doesn't matter to the board, it's what the outside looks like, so I went and looked at it and the neighborhood, and then I went out in Ammon and looked at some in Ammon, um, and there's some that are west of the Auto Falls Airport. And I have to say, the ones that I was the most impressed with probably were the ones west of the Auto Falls Airport. And the reason why is because they were, you would have a house, a nice home with a three car garage, or two, or three, and then you would have one or two affordable homes next to it, and then you would have a couple more nicer homes, and they were mixed all together. So what I found was, is, is I drove through that sub, well, it's a pretty good sized subdivision now, I didn't realize it was that big, um. If there was too many small homes together, there was too many cars parked together. So for example, in one street, there was three of them together, side by side, and they're the affordable homes, and one house had a Jeep in the garage, a Jeep in the driveway, a camper on the side of it, and three vehicles out on the road, the house next to it was similar, so, so what I'm getting at is, if you get them, if, wherever I found them too compacted, there was a lot more vehicles and a lot more trailers there. Uh, if they were on bigger lots, like if there was a nice big lot next to them and the people had a three car garage, and then there was a, an affordable home, there was not that problem, I never noticed that problem, so there was more room. Um, now I honestly think, and I didn't measure, so I can't swear by this, but I'm pretty sure they were the same size lots, but they might not have been, uh, but they were just a little bit smaller home so they could pack more stuff in. So as I read through the different comments at the public hearing for the P and, from the P and Z, um, our fire chief Randy Adams, he, he basically said that if they're too close, or basically, if you don't have enough drivei- driveway space, you get trailers and RVs, uh, all kinds of toys, so it's hard for them to fight the fire. Uh, I actually saw that, I was amazed that I saw one house that had a two car garage, and I'm pretty sure the camp trailer was twice as long as the garage, sitting next to it, in a, on a gravel pad, um, so I was kind of, uh, taken back by that, I guess, because I didn't expect that. So, so that was his con- that's just one of his comments, but, uh, so then I went through and I, I read our Public Works comments, or Justin Johnson from our Public Works, I read through our chief of police's comments, and I read through every individual that, that spoke, a lot of people that spoke, it was on emotions, it was on schools, it was on the fact that there'd be too many vehicles, things like that. So, I asked our superintendent where we were at school wise, just so I would have an idea, and he said that if we have, right now, if we get, with the bond that we passed and the upgrades that they're making, if we get thirty kids per grade, that's, that's basically one class, so we're gonna go between twenty-five and thirty kids, that's the max they can take per grade, if they get more than that, then we're gonna have to bring in modulars or do something different. So, the school is not prepared out very far either, same with the city, I mean, I'm not blaming any of this on the school, by any means. So, as I read through our subdivision plans, and I know I'm talking a lot, and you guys can fill in here in a minute, as I read through our subdivision ordinance, it says that basically, uh, we have to be able to provide adequate water, uh, sanitation, sewer and garbage, well, at this point, we cannot do that. The Fox Hollow subdivision, Fox, Fox Crossing, Fox Crossing, there's a Fox Hollow in Auto Falls, isn't there? Okay, Fox Crossing, I was driving around a lot of them, okay, Fox Crossing, right now, it cannot tie to the sewer until the park subdivision is put in, or at least the sewer line is put in. So they don't have access to sewer until the park subdivision, which is hopefully going. Um, the other problem is, is our, right now, we put twenty-five thousand dollars a year away in a, in a budget to buy a garbage truck. Every five years or so, we have to buy a garbage truck, well, a garbage truck is over five hundred thousand, so we have enough, hopefully, to pay for half the truck and then we pay payments on the other half. We trade in our oldest truck and we keep a secondary truck for emergencies when one breaks down. And believe it or not, garbage trucks break down a lot, so, in order to put another three hundred and seventy-five homes in, we would have to, number one, we would have to buy another garbage truck, because we can't keep up with what we have, we'd have to hire another person for that garbage truck, then we pay an outside company, after we fill them, the dumpsters in the transfer station, we hire an outside company to haul them off for us and dump them. We would have to buy our own truck with a roll-off bed in order to keep up because they can't keep up with us. So, we would end up having to hire two employees, a garbage truck, and a roll-off bed truck in order to keep up with the sanitation part of that, just for those three hundred and seventy-five homes. So that is the biggest concern I have is those two things, right now, so, and, um, turning the time to you guys, what is your comments, questions?
You want me to start?
Yeah, we'll, we'll throw you to the wolves first.
Yeah, there you go, dude, I always gets the best jobs. I did, I also read through the minutes, um, and, and have been prior to this on planning and zoning board, and have had many fun and exciting public hearings that that one wasn't so great. I mean, it's really easy for BJ, that wasn't, my first one was really hard, BJ, get one that nobody ever comes to, but we also had many that nobody ever came to also, and so, as I read through their minutes and listened to their, or watched their comments as I, I read them and, and tried to piece together what exactly happened and what was going on, I started to look back at some of those exact same things, so, I went and looked at neighborhoods too, um, just because I live in an older neighborhood here in town, so I can't look at my neighborhood and think that that's the way the world is anymore. So as I drove through South Point and got out and tried to get in the house to look at it inside too, as well as outside, um.
Did you get arrested?
No.
Oh, okay.
This might be for the Hicks group, don't leave the keys out where they usually find them because boss has been looking for a house, we found lots of keys and lots of ways to get in, especially when workers are there. The best is when you go and the construction guys are there, they let you wander around, they might ask you who you are, but. So I wandered around there, looked at that and actually did the steps off, so, when you went over there to look, it's only six of my size eleven and halves from the house line to the fence line. And then I was like, wait a minute, I, that's just bigger than a lawnmower, how are you gonna get anything back there? So, went back and read chief's comments, chief of fires comments, and went, okay, that makes sense, I see what you're saying, you can't get back to fight a fire, safety has gotta be our priority, then read through chief Muller's comments, same thing, are we prepared to handle the influx of people? Get an opportunity also to talk to one of the, the board members of the school district, and I got the exact same answer you did, no. They, we do not have capacity, and the other side of that coin is, and I don't know if superintendent told you, we passed the levy, we don't have any bonding capacity, so we can't fix it in the short term if we bring in more than, what? Couple hundred kids, if that? So that scares me a lot, because I got one who's trying to finish, I'm trying to get all mine through Shelley High School, and it, hopefully it'll work, that they'll get all, that he'll get to get that done. And then I stepped to the comprehensive plan because I helped write it, um, I was on, brand new on planning and zoning when we started the comp plan and I got to go through that, sit, that whole scenario, and I'll tell you, nobody came to our community, come and tell us what you want your community to look like, there was only a handful of people, and when I say handful, I'm thinking five or six, and I felt really bad about that at that time, but didn't know how important that was, that we get public input, and then I saw that firsthand for the six years I served on planning and zoning, is that when things were, when things affected my house or Kim, things affected Kim's house, Kim's, Kim would show up, they would show up, one of the fifty-five people that got, sent a letter that said, hey, this is happening in your neighborhood, one person would show up, only because it was the one right next door, or only because it was the one that was very vocal in the neighborhood. And so, I feel bad that we didn't have this room packed like it is today for that meeting. Um, and as I looked through the rest of the testimony, I went back to the comp plan and found a couple of things that, that I, um, wanted to do, yeah.
Can you explain, there's so many people here from the public, can I read what, what a comp, do you understand what a comprehensive plan is? So our comprehensive plan, its policies in this plan are designed to have sufficient flexibility to respond to changes in the rate, type, and location of growth. At the same time, it calls for a pattern of Ermen can containment, I should put my glasses on.
Put them on, see, just keep them on all the time helps.
Containment and the preservation of high productive agriculture land with a circulation of urban services patterns that will reinforce a present compact pattern of urban development. Arrests the spell development that is beginning to ru- provide for future growth consistent with current environmental qualities of the city, it also calls for directed growth in a manner which will allow maintenance of high levels of public service and reasonable cost.
Great, so thanks for taking part in my deal, good job, um, because I'm over, uh, or getting to learn what Public Works does, we have a, a definite infrastructure problem that hasn't been addressed in the past and needs to be addressed now, and we all are working through that, we've had work meetings, we've talked, um, talked with the, the city engineer today, and, and came up with this point in the objectives inside there, it says, protect citizens' investment in existing public facilities, water, sewer, streets, fire, police by encouraging controlled growth through city planning reviews, development agreements, and fees. We've talked a lot about our fees, we even saw that tonight when we upgraded our fees, because we have to, we, we gotta replace the old stuff. Um, develop an annexation plan that allows the city to assess costs of services to new development, determine impacts to the city budget, environment, economy, and land use, and as I look at this land use for what it is and what has been proposed and what they looked at, I'm with the mayor on it, I, that's a lot in a small space, and I think we, they didn't take a long enough hard look at it, and that's part of what planning and zoning, sometimes they do there, they're volunteers, and I've been there in their shoes and I understand that, nothing bad on them, but, I, I think we need to think about this a little bit and look in a different direction.
Kim?
So, and I have to say, I appreciate our planning and zoning, um, committee, because it is volunteer and they are appreciated and I appreciate, I want to, you know, there was only four members there that night, there was two missing. Um, I don't know if things would have changed if that happened, um, when we look at the comprehensive plan, we, there needs to be subdivisions on all social economic stature, you know, we need affordable housing, middle class, upper class, stuff like this, with the proposed in the, the minutes are proposing, tell me if I correct, three hundred and seventy-five homes in the access of three to five years, and that's a lot of home, and it's all affordable housing, if I, and that, but that's one third of our, of, it's gonna increase us by one third. So is that going to keep us, our comprehensive plan equal? Because we wanna have every, from affordable to a little bit nicer, so I, I worry about that, um. Let me go through my notes, I'm over my, the mayor's appointed me to be over Parks and Rec, and as we look at the comprehensive plan and as we see growth in, in Shelley, and growth isn't bad, but we have to do it in a smart way, and growth can be exciting, you know, but we have to make sure we look at our green space, our walk paths, I mean, there's so much that we have to look at, it's just not developments, we have to look at the whole city as a whole to make sure that we do it in a productive way. I know, like, Ammon grew really fast years ago and they don't have enough green space, and so, I worry as being appointed over Parks and Rec to make sure if we have that kind of growth, like, are we prepared for it on top of the schools, and I did look at the homes also, I'm not gonna touch based on everything that I've done that we've already touched on, but those are just a few of my concerns.
All right, Adam?
You know, it's interesting that we have, when there's something the community is really concerned about, they come out of the woodwork and contact us and come see us and, um, I mean, usually this place isn't this full unless it's like a scout group that's here, but, so I'm glad to see everybody here, it's great. But in our comprehensive plan, it says that citizen involvement and support is a very important implementation tool, and it has been strongly affirmed throughout the comprehensive plan update. The public should be aware of and involved in the city's planning decision. Based on public guidance, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council make their decisions. In effect, this means that the decision process begins and ends with citizen involvement. Shelley is well known for its community spirit and citizen involvement policies, so I want to, it's been great to hear from everybody this last week and to see, to see the support here tonight as well, I think that, uh, that the citizens should be commended for that. Um, a couple of concerns that I have, um, I guess that hasn't already been talked about is, um, I look at the map and I see that there's some green space, there's three, I think, three retention ponds, three greens base on there, four? Four, but I, I look at it and I say, there's three hundred and seventy-five homes, and if it's affordable housing for families, and there's. And there's two, three kids per home, where are they all gonna go? Um, where are they all gonna play? I mean, and the lots aren't big enough for them to play on necessarily. So. Um, that's one of my concerns. Yeah, another concern that I have is that if we have three hundred and seventy-five homes. Times two cars going down Center Street, um, that's gonna be quite a congestion, right? It's gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of traffic on that road. And I know that there's been some, you know, the the we've talked about im- improving the roads. Going out there because we have the other subdivision across the street, but it's still a single lane road. They're still gonna be just, you know, the one way into the city. Uh, for that. And so that is a concern of mine because I think that. When we grow, we also need to grow industry. We need to have business in the city as well. And um, so I would, most of these homes would probably get on Center Street if the new five lane highway and head right into Auto Falls. Um, that's that's my a- and I'm a I'm I'm a local business owner. I'm we're building on, we're gonna have a nice little retail place. And this would be awesome for us, but when I really look at it, I really have to consider the city of Shelley and what we want. Um, and personally, I don't think that we want this. Um, and I'm just going to and and I'm over the police and so I just have one. Comment that I would like to read from uh, the chief and he says. I believe we should all remember why we live here and what this area of our way of life means to each and every one of us. If we do not wake up and return to being good stewards of our community. We will most likely lose it and once it's gone, it will forever be a memory. And I think that we really need to be stewards over what we have here in this community and I think that's really important. Um, um, that we have this, that we have controlled growth. It's coming, it's here. We already have several subdivisions that we've approved, a lot of housing that's already coming in like over five hundred homes. That we've already approved, I guess, if you wanna call it that. Um, and so I think that this would really put too much on the city. Um, and that's that's my comments.
Well, in case you haven't realized where we all stand, um, we really care about the community. We really care about our quality of life. The mayor pointed out several things. It was really good and each of the council. Council people have pointed out things that we. Are right at a limit right now with what we have, okay? We're really close, you know, with the water and with a lot of other things in the city and this would. Put us over the edge right now. Our budget looks really good because we're we're good stewards. We take care of the money for people's Shelley. And I think it it like most of us think that right now this ain't a good time. To bring in a bunch of small homes or a bunch of homes more than what we already planned for. Uh, so. I, my biggest thing as as a councilman is I don't like spending money and I don't like spending your money. And I'm afraid if this development were to take place, there'd be money going out. Coming from you and you'd be subsidizing that development in some way. You know, whether it's through added police protection, fire protection, I don't know. Is Randy here tonight? Randy called me. We we talked about, you know, a a lot of issues. I safety is a big issue with the chief and Adam and me and. And the whole council, you know, it we can't fight a fire or or get to it. Uh, and these homes don't even have outside spigots, you know, and I've never heard of that before, but I guess it's. I guess guess it can happen. So, uh. I'm not in favor of it. I'd make a motion.
Well, okay, so the P and C recommended approval. It was sent to us. Now I'm open for a motion.
I'd make a motion and I I want P and Z, I love them. They're all volunteers. They do a really good job, but. They failed to look at the comprehensive plan, what it would do to the city, even though the guidelines were met, they didn't look at the overall picture and. And uh, uh, anyway, with that said, I'd make a recommendation, recommendation that we deny the application.
Can I say one thing too? I want to address Anderson and Hicks. Like we appreciate, we want growth. We uh, we it's nothing about them because they're they're reputable builders. They're they're good guys, but it's not about them. It's just the design, like maybe we can work something else out.
As it is the land, what you're proposing for the use of this land. We should try strike one and go to strike two. See what see what we come up next because we want you here. We want the growth as we can handle it. We don't want it to be out.
But but I I I disagree a little bit in the fact that I think that we've already bid off more than we can shoot in some respects.
When we can handle it.
We need to hold off on what we have and figure out what we gotta get arms around, hands around where we're what we have first. Before we look at any more development. That's that's my.
I'll second Earl's motion.
Okay, it's a move and second that we deny this uh subdivision. All in favor? Or in favor? Next on the agenda, uh, Heidi Kennedy. Well, and then Jacqueline Whitworth was on here, but she is not here. But she is our, in our last meeting, she came to talk to us about if we would maintain, we needed, she needed a letter. For a grant if we would maintain the Centennial Park subdivision if it was expanded out a little bit.
We agreed that we would do that.
We just need a motion so that we can write a letter. So I need a motion.
That we go ahead and prove to write a letter that will specify that if Centennial Park is expanded, we will take care of it.
I'd second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we go ahead and write a letter that if Centennial Park is expanded that we will as a city maintain it. All in favor? Or in favor?
You guys each have a copy. I I drafted a letter just for your.
Yeah, so real quick, if if you would like to leave, you're welcome to leave if you're here for a certain. Reason only, if 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 we've addressed it, you can leave. Don't feel bad if you leave, but you're welcome to stay. So.
Thanks for coming, everybody.
Thank you for coming. I wish I could advertise something else with everybody here. Like extending the bike path.
Watering every other day.
Yeah, watering every other day, extending the bike path, you know.
Water every other day. Hey Chrissy, you won't have an audience. Hey Chrissy, you won't have an audience. You won't have an audience.
You're welcome.
Okay, so. Next on the agenda is. The grant proposal. Is that you? Okay, awesome. Well, if you stand up right there, then that mic will pick you up. So you tell us how much money you can get us and we'll decide what we're using.
But if you do a block grant, which is five hundred thousand dollars from the Department of Commerce in Idaho, you can only. You can only go in once. So water or wastewater this fall and it's once a year. So. That's kind of where the priorities systemize are, you know.
Which one, which one is more important?
Water more first or wastewater first? Now you can do, you know, the others simultaneously. Looks better if you. Do one at a time, but we can help you with all of that. So we work with um, Idaho Department of. Quality, USDA, R D, Army Corps of Engineers, um, of course, the block grant. Um, and I'm sure you guys don't need um, a bond. I don't know how much money we're talking.
It depends on which one we go after.
So we can help you with final election or judicial confirmation, but basically our job is to help you guys get funded. So that David has a job.
I like the way she said that, yeah. That that is the end goal is to keep Dave working, right?
So and as we do this, a lot of, I mean, obviously our bread and butter comes from administering these grants and the funding agencies. Allow you to pay us through those grants, but it does cost money for me to. You know, not sit at home in the evening and come to your lovely council meeting and also write these grants and um, loan packages for the. Funding agencies. So why I'm here tonight is to talk to you about what we call our development contracts and. Um, I understand there might be some confusion in the past. Our company just rolled that into the grant administration part. And we've kind of done things, um, trying to do things quite differently. So we do do an administration or I'm sorry, development contract ahead of time just to cover. And it doesn't even cover all of our fees, just kind of pay for what we're doing up until the point that. You know, the grants and loans are given to the funding agencies. And so I brought a couple copies tonight of one for water and one for wastewater. Um, they're both very, very simple and they're both. I'm gonna make sure before I say this out loud.
Very inexpensive?
Yeah. You tell anybody I'm a cheap, I'll cut you down.
No, I didn't say cheap. I said inexpensive.
They're both for twenty-five hundred dollars. So um, and we'll cover our costs, but it. Shows us that you've got skin in the game.
Right, and clarify that again for the mayor. We have to pick water or sewer wastewater. And the twenty-five hundred bucks is depending on which one we do.
Correct. Now you can just get it all out of the way and pick both tonight and then.
Well, until we can.
Right. Now, because because every, every project has different ju- developments, right? And so if you need to do both, we can just skip both of the development contracts out of the way or I'll come back. Later, one of the other ones and we'll do the other one. But you can, you know, we can start working on the projects simultaneously, but you can only put in for block grant, one at a time. So you can put in for one in November and then one in November of twenty-twenty. Does that make sense?
Yep, that makes sense. That's what I remember from my notes when we met with Chrissy.
Sandy, yeah.
So there's just two copies.
So so. Okay, so so what's your? How how do I say this delicately? No, no. What is your percentage of getting grants?
Oh, my personal one is a hundred.
So if we give you twenty-five hundred dollars, you're you're gonna get a hundred percent, you're gonna get us a grant. Are you a lawyer? Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
She's played this game before. You're sick.
Um, no, so we do have a pretty good success rate and the reason that we do is because we talk to funding agencies ahead of time to see. How much money they have, what projects they have coming up and what would be most competitive. So if we find out that. Useless hypothetical, that your water system's gonna be a million and your wastewater is gonna be three million. And they've got a lot of projects coming in this year will tell you to do water. But we can start developing them at the same time because I know um, when I asked when they're due, one was a year ago. But they wanted it started. So we can start developing and and then, you know, discuss with the funding agencies what's more important. If it comes to. That all this money that's been thrown around, I mean, what E D A just put out three billion today or yesterday. Anyway, so. If this year, it turns out that D E Q or USDA already has a huge influx of cash. Right now is when you want to capture it for both water and wastewater and sit on it for a year for one of them to apply for block grant for the five hundred thousand. There are benefits and. Takeaways from both. D E Q has Davis' takeaways, USDA already does not, block grant has Davis' takeaways. Really comes down to the size of the project. If you have a really, really large project. That um, we get USDA funding for, we'll put all of your. Engineering fees and admin fees and all that stuff in the block grant so that the contractor doesn't pay. Higher wages, which right now it doesn't matter. Everybody's paying more than Davis' takeaways. But we can, we can work that through when that comes back to working with the funding partners and what they can do. Um, we just are right now sending off our letters to Army Corps of Engineers to try and get D E Q for funding, so. We need to know which, you know, what's the most highest priority so we can get their grants as well. So it comes down to what you guys decide is most important. And like I said, honestly, where you have two projects that are pretty much ready to go.
So um, the water project has been. Wastewater, we were talking about the transmission center, has been submitted to D E Q and is in the review process. So once we get that back, it will be.
So so by October, that'll all be ready, the whole period. So.
So when you say the water project, you're talking about the booster pump. You're talking, are you talking about that? You're talking about the the line from well five to four?
So. The biggest is Davis' takeaway just which right now doesn't even matter. Um.
Why does it not matter? I'm gonna ask.
Everybody pays so much right now.
Everybody's paying higher, higher than those wages.
Yeah.
So the Davis' takeaways are federal wage scale.
Right.
Yeah, I think I think he's, I think he's meaning why aren't, why aren't my savings not matter?
Yes. Yeah.
Right now it's.
Yeah, right. Usually those would be the the good paying jobs, the federal jobs that, right? But but now.
Sorry, they generally bump your bids up quite a bit.
Yeah, costs more, right.
Right now your bids are gonna come in higher because.
Because the economy's going crazy and yeah, contracting is, yeah, going nuts.
Well, that transmission line's probably three times more than it was when we first looked at it, isn't it?
Well, last year when we did it, it was two times more than we first looked at it.
Yeah, that was last year.
That was last year. So a couple of things um, that Chrissy can add, that is. D E Q um, has both loan, uh, subset loan, D E Q.
Oh, sorry.
And loan forgiveness potentials.
They're gonna say grant?
No. They have loan and loan.
Guess what the teacher's gonna say?
Uh, but they also have a twenty-year term on their loan. World Development has loan, loan interest loan and grant line. And they have a thirty-year term.
They have forty now also.
Thirty and thirty, yes, you choose thirty and a forty term, but they do not have. Um, Davis, I mean, not Davis, C B G is a grant-only program. Which you guys remember, last time we chased after the water. And Army Corps of Engineers is a, about a seventy-five percent grant. What I mean by that is they, if you give a certain amount of money, say you get a million dollars, they're gonna hold the percentage of that money back. Pay themselves to the management. So if you get a big, a million dollar grant, you may only get a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant. So.
They hold fifty thousand dollars back?
They hold more than that. Wonderful. So.
They're only gonna hold fifty out of the program.
So that means, so that means that you got two only grant programs and then you got two loan. And grant programs and you know, D E Q's not really grant. Uh, the thing to keep in mind is with the funding agencies that are loan and grant type programs. like USDA, they have some internal targets that they like to hit in terms of how much grant to how much loan that they disperse on an annual basis. And so the grant portion becomes highly competitive. The things that, um, can affect the competitive nature of the grant programs are already the law uh, and income, income levels.
So, so your income levels are set. So they have a, a, you know, depending on what your L M I is, that's your grant, grant threshold max. Doesn't mean you're gonna give back, that's the max that they'll give you.
And the, then also how much grant money they've already given out to other people and how much money they have available back to the years to apply. Those are the kind of the four primary things that affect how you compete. And so what Chrissy helps do is she helps stay in front of the administrators in each of those funding agency groups, right? So she, she talks to Karen Kelly on a regular basis. She talks to Steven Atlanta with USDA. She's talking to Billy at D E Q with the S R F program. Um, she's talking to Crystal Harmon with the C B G programs, which are all the people in this area that help us except for, doesn't do us much here. He helps with a ton of this.
And it's, yeah.
So she's in front of those people and it, it really has a lot to do with having her finger on the pulse of the program, where's it going? So when she says that, you know, let's say USDA says, we got a whole bunch of money this year for water projects or we have the same amount of money, but hardly anybody's asking about water. Then she can help you know which one of those programs that we can apply for. Because we either want to apply where competition is less or where we are more competitive. That's how we do it.
So are you trying to sell us, Chrissy?
I'm trying to.
Chrissy kind of sells herself if you hang out for a little while.
I've known Chrissy for so many years that I can't. Well, we're not gonna age ourselves, but can I just? I know, ser- seriously. The nice thing about, can I know, but seriously, Chrissy and her reputation and education that she is, came from, behind her, even your peers speak highly of you. Like you, and when you say, oh, I have a hundred percent, I believe you have a hundred percent. Cause you, you have a great reputation. So, anyway, I, I will say that you are a woman of integrity.
Where we've been previous.
So I, I.
Nobody's doing that for us.
One, all these programs will match each other. You will have to put some skin in the game. You can sit in Anki, they love cash. But at the end of the day, these programs will match each other, but you will need to put some skin in the game. We'll minimize how much, as much as we can, considering cash is going to be home. So, anyway, that's why I'm here.
Okay, so when, after, when we decide what we wanna do, it's all turned in in October?
No, um, it's, it's kind of all throughout the year. The, the big deadline that we're up against is the C B G, the block grant goes in in November. Um, November twenty-third or twenty-fourth, it's right before Thanksgiving. So that's, that's the sticking point right now is, you know, what? Because the others we can turn in throughout the year, but the block grant is pretty once a year, hard and fast. We'll look at working on full sides with the other funding agencies. And the block grant is probably, it gives you the least amount of money, but it is a hundred percent grant. You know, you offer it, but it's the biggest application. I mean, it's, it's an inch wider, I mean, or two inch wider, depending on how big the project is. And so that's, is the hardest one to write. And I don't know why that is. Cause it's a ton.
Cause they're giving you money.
Cause it's a ton, I guess. It's all federal, it's all federal money, all of that is federal money, but.
Well, the other thing to add to that, um, Chrissy's saying they're kind of all the others. What, what that means is that the funding agencies like to work together to buy their products to make projects successful, rather than giving everybody just enough money to not finish, right? And so even though C B G has a hard date, and this is when you have to go, the sooner we start talking to the other funding agencies and the sooner we get our project on their mind so that when they are sitting around their lunch table and saying, hey, who do you think we ought to give money to this year? Your project comes up. Having your projects coming up with now S R F, USDA, and Army Corps means that when C B G comes around, they already have an idea of what projects need just a little bit more money to be successful. Because if we wait until eleventh hour and come in, then decisions have really already been unofficially made.
Okay, okay, so your job is to take them lunch and get our name out in front of them.
That's right, and then I write the grounds.
It's more than lunch.
Yeah.
Little bit.
Lunch is the fun part.
That's the good part, right?
Yeah.
So what do we need to decide on? Because we need, obviously, with what we just talked about before, we need both.
Yeah.
So I don't know why we wouldn't wanna work on both. Sign both development agreements.
So these, the contracts she brought to you that are twenty-five hundred dollar each for water and wastewater, this is what she needs to proceed, to move forward with this.
So if Cox's honey covers one, the city of Shelley can cover the other one.
How'd you know that was coming? Adam, did you, could you see that? That was like, that was like a softball pitch in the air, right to you, buddy.
I'll throw in the free here.
Hey. Well, I think we probably need to do it and go with after.
I agree.
So, um, we might have to rob from Peter to pay Paul somewhere down the road, but I think we better do it.
Yeah, we're not doing that. BJ's like, no, you're not doing that.
Well, I mean, I, if, I, I think he's.
No, it's in the budget.
I think he's.
You mean, you mean for the, for the development groups?
Yeah, so, so what I'm saying is if, if you, if, if we get one of these grants and we've gotta put matching money.
Right.
We can take it out of the general fund, we can take it out of different places.
Right.
To cover our portion.
Well, now, we need to look at us, we go through this, what is in your reserves, in your water fund and in your wastewater fund? Because that also makes a difference. I mean, it comes down to.
The less you have, the better off you are or the more?
No. They wanna see that you're a proactive city. I mean, they, they wanna, they wanna give where it's needed, but they want.
Do you wanna take a copy of our ordinance today that we increased the year?
I wrote it down.
Good job. Okay, good.
So do you need a motion to?
Yeah, I need a motion to go ahead and do both of them.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve doing both of those, signing both of those development agreements so we can get going on that grant money.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded that we go ahead and approve or sign both of those grant proposals. All in favor? All in favor? Okay.
Thanks, Chrissy. We will, we will.
Mayor, you know what, that's, this is actually contracts, so we probably need a roll call vote on that.
Oh, okay.
Aye.
Kim.
Aye.
Adam.
Aye.
Earl. Four ayes, okay.
No, was that for both then?
Thank you for coming.
Just for both. For clarification, the motion was for both.
That was for both.
I know it was noticed for both, so we're good.
Thanks, Chrissy.
Okay, thank you very much.
See ya.
Okay, let's see, ten, oh, Luke blocks him. Um. Permission to extend his, uh, temporary C O. Luke, where are we at, sir?
Uh, it will be done by the sixth, next Friday. So we can extend it till six, it's gonna be done.
Behind your memo, there's actually a little, um, letter signed by Dallin Jolly.
In the contract.
Yep, okay.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, so.
They need to make a motion to extend that temporary C O till whatever date.
Yeah, we have to specify the day, right?
Yeah, so do it to, at least to the middle of the month.
I'd say we do it till next council meeting.
Which would be the?
The tenth.
Be the tenth.
Well, okay, so Dallin says he's gonna have it done by when?
By the sixth.
I gotta stand up. Anyway, um, I'm cramping up here. I, I would just assume.
Give him a little bit of lead.
Give him a little bit of lead way because you don't know. I don't, I don't want it to be a, two days after he says he's gonna have it done. Because what happens if he has problems or he can't get it here?
So make it till the eighteenth? Almost the middle of the month?
It's the middle of the month.
That's before the week, exactly, isn't it exactly the week before? It might be exactly the week.
It's, it's up to you guys, but I just, I hate to.
So you wanna do the twenty-fourth, so?
To our second meeting.
Our second meeting.
That's what I would do.
I'm good with it.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we. Extend the C, C what?
C O date.
Temporary C O.
Temporary C O date.
Thank you.
Sure, very welcome, Kim.
To July twenty-fourth.
Okay.
No, August twenty-fourth.
August, August.
Okay, so before I repeat this and get a second, okay.
It's been a long day.
Luke, Luke, that doesn't mean that you can say, hey, you got till the twenty-fourth, though. We want you to get it done. Okay, so I need a second.
I'll second it.
So moved and seconded that we go ahead and extend the temporary C O until the twenty-fourth of August. All in favor? All in favor? Thanks, all right.
Luke, how often do you come to the city and get more than you asked for?
Get more than I asked for?
Yeah, how often, how often does that happen? That's worked out pretty good.
Depends on what more than I asked for.
Fair enough.
True.
Fair enough.
All right, thank you. All right, recognized citizens from the floor. Anybody got anything?
Um, I just had a question, uh, what I need to do. Uh, I wasn't made aware of if there's only one permit allotted for parks, uh, for food. Uh, and how we could possibly get more? Cause the one permit, I think, covers all parks and not just individual parks. And so it's usually given to one person in particular.
Is this?
Talking about the concessionaire.
Concessionaire.
Oh, the concession, oh, the concession.
So a long time ago, they decided, because there were so many that went on there.
Right.
And there was Russian sprinklers, there was garbage, everybody putting their fingers in everybody else cause you can't, I mean, if there's ten vendors out there, you don't know who have, who didn't pick up their garbage. Um, they made it exclusive, the prior board made it exclusive for one concessionaire a year. It was first come, first served.
So right now, who do we have? Is it just?
Um, right now, it's that Jenny.
Girls, right there.
Uh, isn't it World Street, so I think it's called.
Yeah, Sweet Street.
Yeah.
The girls all came to.
Yeah, gentlemen, and I think there's four or five of us.
So we can't make, we can't make a decision on it right now, but can't, can't, can't we put it on the agenda to revisit?
Yeah, I think we need to.
Yeah.
Can we put that on the agenda for?
So, so what are you asking for? You wanna be able to sit up at a park too or?
Yeah, so like whenever they have the baseball tournaments or any kind of event, you'll be able to set up, sell food. Things like that. Um, another thing that kind of was like, was it's only, it doesn't cover one park, it covers all the parks. So that one permit, you can't sell it, any other park, you can't throw at that one, so, yeah.
Okay.
So we might wanna.
I'd be willing to look at that.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
And then I was wanting to invite you to get on the next one as well for, uh, our living situation. Uh, being that, that housing has, uh, gone up and there's so much to go around.
Okay, Ruben, on that one, you actually have a special use permit to be able to live there. It's conditional based on until you, um, so long after you opened your business, I think. That actually has to go through the planning and zoning agenda, through, through them. So it puts you on the planning and zoning agenda. Okay, you'll need to fill out a special use permit application. There's one online or you can pick up one for me tomorrow.
Sounds perfect. Thank you so much, yes.
All right. Thanks, Ruben.
Thanks.
For everything, including the brisket.
All right, anything, anybody else? Okay, um, next on the agenda, new council business. Um, accept the retin- teenage pond in the North Shelley Business Park. Justin said it was done and good.
Yes, and this was a long time coming.
Well, I know it's been fifteen years or something.
Yeah, I think Jeremy looked at it too, didn't he?
And everything's good, okay. So I need a motion to go ahead and?
I'll make a motion to go ahead and, uh, accept the retention pond over at North, North, isn't it Shelley? Yeah, North Shelley Business Park.
Been moved and seconded that we go ahead and approve, uh, the retention pond at the North Shelley Business Park. All in favor? All in favor? Thanks. No business licenses, um, present third quarter disclosures report.
Uh, yes, so the finance report, I need to submit to you guys because we don't want to publish it anymore in the paper. You get to put it online. So this is on our webpage and this is just for your information where we're at as of the third quarter of this fiscal year.
Okay. So do you need to tell us anything or are we good?
Nope, I just need to make a, a, a record that I presented it to you.
All right, next on the agenda, um, Earl wants more money. So consider funding the shortage for the Senior Citizen Center project.
Well, well, well.
Leave a town and it's all about Earl, right? Is that what you're saying?
You know, we're losing our, our, uh.
Director.
Director. We have hired another lady. Board did, I didn't. But we only had one submit. Uh, I sent a resume to the mayor, here it is. BYU graduate.
Yeah, she's pretty sharp. I, she seems to be pretty sharp. I haven't met her.
Sharp, uh, I mean, she's done some pretty good things. And I met her and personally liked her. And, uh, the board really liked her. Uh, Denise likes her, she's trained her. But a little complication we come up with with all that construction we had done.
Is that her name?
We come up.
How do you say her name?
I don't know, that's why I give it to you, that's what I did that to say.
Kim had to look at it in her third class.
He says she speaks three languages at least, so we're not sure what language.
Mom, to Mama Miracle Reams, do you think?
Yeah, that's what.
Does that sound right?
That's what I would say.
Mama. But anyway, let, let me, the heart of things is, she's gonna be taking over and we got a five thousand dollar override on phase two. Five thousand, four hundred and one dollars and eighty-one cents that between the agencies, they didn't get it worked out correct. You know, we, we got a five thousand dollar grant from somebody that they said, yeah, that'll cover everything. Well, it didn't. And I'd like to go ahead and, out of revenue sharing, uh, take this money out so the new director starts out.
Not in debt.
Right. You know, we do have some money coming in, but we, we've kind of decided that was gonna go for new tables and chairs. We haven't, the tables and chairs in and out are just junk. You know, we got this beautiful building or the kitchen and everything and then the old tables and chairs and stuff. So if we could, we don't have to give them the whole amount, but if we could help them out with, you know, a good portion of it, I think they'd really appreciate it. I'd like to go ahead and give it all to them.
How much, five, what is it?
Five thousand, four hundred and one dollars and eighty-one cents. And that's owed to.
What do you think, Sandy?
Construction company.
Uh, Earl and I had talked about it before, um, I'd have to take out, out of the, the state revenue sharing. Um, we do have a senior citizen line item in that, in there, cause we do have to give them two thousand dollars a year. So we just take it out of that line item. We'd be over expended in that line item, but there's money in there to cover that.
All right.
I'm okay with it.
Everybody?
Yep.
I'll make a motion then that we go ahead and take it out of federal revenue sharing, uh, or state revenue sharing, I'm sorry. Five thousand, four hundred and one dollars, eighty-one cents to pay the, uh, overage for the senior center phase two construction.
Okay. Been moved and seconded that we go ahead and take, uh, money out of state revenue sharing to cover the overages for the Senior Citizen Center. All in favor? All in favor? Okay.
We did take, I, I guess it's good to point out, we did take ownership, right?
Yes.
We own, we own Shelley Citizen, so we.
Yeah.
It's really like running out.
Yeah, it's ours.
Next council report, BJ, what do you got for us?
Nothing to see.
Okay, Sandy.
Um, just to let you know that in the front of your binders, there are some, um, Virginia County comment sheets. Each one of those for the transfer of vision rights. Um, looks like one of them is down by the, for the intersection of the forty-fourth and Pebble Road and seven hundred North Highline Road. And they're quite a ways away from the city. The other one is Lava Side Road in Blacca. Um, and then there's also.
Um, and then there's also a, an invitation to the hearing, the, for a public hearing for the area of impact agreement between Bingham County and the city of Blockfoot. If anybody'd like to attend that, that is August eleventh and September eighth. Jimmy, do you have any comments on the transfer of division rights?
I, I don't think they're holding true to what they said about, we're not gonna do this because the one is moving. One from the middle of the desert to somewhere in town or in the camp, inside the county and somewhere else. And then you have the other one that's moving them, I mean, eleven, receiving eleven division rights instead of parcel, which looks like a deal. So they're making another subdivision in the county. So I, I think we just need, any comment we make, I think we need to put it down there. I thought, I thought we were gonna stop doing these transferring divisional rights around to do that.
I actually gave you a copy of what the, what Tiffany from Bingham County gave me in regards to that, whether they can or cannot.
Is it on the front of the page?
Here it is, Bingham County Commissioners, um, this is the enforcement of IDO code and Bingham County Code relating to subdivisions and divisions in excess of four divisions. And right away approachments. That, that's how it is titled, but in here it talks about the divisions also. Of how you can transfer divisions from what you get.
Okay, so out in the middle of the desert, they don't have division rights.
Yeah, so they're sending four division rights out to the middle of the desert.
Sending them or?
They're saying, they're taking them from there.
Taking them from and to. They're just kind of working.
Sending three, receiving parcels and sending eleven, so is that add to eleven, three, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven? So they're taking four from various locations and they're putting them on one parcel to make a subdivision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought they were gonna put the kibosh on that.
Well, I did too, but evidently not.
I know.
Well, I would like, I'd like to see proof that they're legitimately looking at. That they were, that they were.
Yeah.
Original parcels that had division rights.
I guess our comment is, at least from, I don't know how we word it or if every one of us gets to do it, but might it be? I thought we were gonna curtail the divi, the, the dividing of division rights.
As a.
From nowhere to help somebody else.
Avoid the subdivision.
Right, make, make a subdivision out of those division rights. I thought it was still that, you know, it was gonna be for personal, that just this person is gonna get them and it's gonna be on the same property. And this looks like they're taking them from three separate parcels with the rights that they have. And they're moving them to one parcel that's making it eleven, which would be a development.
So then they're buying these from somebody else.
Could be, it could be.
Are they original parcels? That's what I want to know, though.
I, that's agree, because that's what we talked about with her when she came.
Yeah.
For when we were talking about developments that are close to the city and not close to the city and why annexation is so good. But this isn't even close, I know it's not close to us, but they're just making another county subdivision.
To say that there was understanding that the transfer of division rights were going to be curtailed or limited to individual subdivisions?
Uh, or not to develop subdivisions, but only, and only original parcel subdivisions within their families. That's what I thought she said and I'd have to go back to the minutes and look.
What do you mean about the original parcel?
That it had division rights on it.
Yeah, your original.
Check it first?
Yeah.
From nineteen seventy-five?
Yeah.
If it's an original, it was a seventy-three?
If, no, no, I think, I, actually it was just a little bit later, I thought it was like seventy-six or something.
Okay, anyway, you get four division rights.
Right. Each, each parcel, right?
Yeah, so are they going back and seeing that they legitimately had those?
Right, that it hasn't already been split off, right?
Because.
You're just saying, yeah, so your concern is to confirm that they actually do have.
Yeah.
To verify they have the division rights they're claiming on the sending parcel.
Exactly.
There is a procedure that Tiffany goes through.
Yeah.
I talked to her about that.
Say they're usually pretty good about it.
They turn to fifty dollar application fee and the owner of the property is required to bring every deed, um, forward. From a certain date, I guess it's seventy-four, maybe when it was acquired, original parcel, I'm not sure. But anyway, the owner that is applying, the person applying has to supply all of those deeds forward so they can see how many times it's been split off. So they do have a procedure.
Yeah, I think they, they're usually pretty good about that. I mean, it doesn't hurt to confirm it, but I think they're usually pretty good about that.
Well, and, and so. I don't know. I, I know places that there's thirteen division, there are thirteen supposedly division rights now. I used to own a piece of property that had seven division rights. Tell me that deal.
Well, that's.
Somebody must have transferred it to it.
Well, yeah, you just don't know, because the way, well, the way that the, the county has managed this.
Right, way it used to happen.
The way the county's managed this, you really don't know, yeah, they go out on the desert, buy some, nothing worth, whatever. This one's got four division rights coming from the middle of a road out in the desert.
Right.
Well, and then, and then here, your, your division right number three, they're taking a section off of this center pivot. But if you look up.
Yeah.
Up further, there's seven homes.
Yeah, well, that's the thing is that it's really just, and we all know what it, what it is.
Right.
It's, it's a, it's a way to get around the subdivision requirements. And if the county wants to promote, like they've said they do, they want to promote orderly growth in the cities.
Around their cities.
Then this doesn't help that.
Yeah, he's more eloquent than what I was trying to say.
Yeah, we'll send that.
Let's send that one.
I like yours.
I like B J's.
With all that education.
Yes, it must be. It's also that big brain he has.
He's still reading.
No, I'm, I'm just thinking, I need to go apply for like a dozen division rights because I've got some property.
I have some property, you never know.
I have property and so I might as well.
You got some rights.
Claim that I've got a dozen division rights too.
See what you can do.
All right. I thought you had.
Uh, just a reminder to remind everybody about the work meeting Thursday night, people with budget stuff that I'll need.
Okay.
Say six o'clock Thursday.
All right, Dave, you got anything for us?
Only that the, uh, first three stuff is all that.
Okay.
And then when you guys are considering. Keep in mind, you know, I know the water project connecting to the wells, four or five together have been out there longer. Because we have an approved subdivision, a park subdivision, that the transmission line hasn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Right, so that's something to consider when we are deciding which.
Okay.
Do, uh, does any of the grants have like a, a COVID mechanism of some, some sort that we could say something about COVID and get money? Just wondering.
Part one.
Oh, yeah.
Which we already got. And the county already got theirs too, so.
Right.
Where our portion of that is for Erwa.
Yeah, okay, Jordan. All right. Michael.
Um, football centers ended, um, going through getting the coaches and kids together, what we have in the draft this week. Um, and we get a lot of hard, it's going good. So, and it's going to be good, I've been meeting with, uh, good kids, really.
What's our numbers on football this year?
Football, we're about the same as we were last year. It's good. Well, we're down in the older kids, the business district is down last year, we have about one, two, three, four, like around there. This year, we only had like ten or more.
Didn't it first open something up though?
I believe they did, but I'm gonna reach out to those parents and those kids and they want to be like, oh, five, a five, something like that. The school's going good, just, one day at a time in the pool.
Okay. Chief. All right. Life.
Um, just. I think we took care, we took care of it all and glad Dave and Gordon were here to help us if we needed any help on that, so. Appreciate all the help from all the department heads, Randy and everybody else.
All right, Kim.
I have nothing tonight.
Adam.
Just this, uh, comment about, you know, the subdivision tonight that was in question. I, I just feel like that it wasn't anything against, um, the developer, but it had to, it was more just that. The increased growth and I just feel like that we need to really can, we really need to get our hands around the stuff that we have now. I mean, you know, we may need another police officer, we may, we need more public works, we need, I mean, we already were at that point. And with the stuff coming on, we're already gonna have to get another garbage truck, we're already gonna have to get. And so I just really think that we need to, to really take a look at that and make sure that, that all that's in line. Because that's what it says in the, in the comprehensive plan is we gotta, we gotta stay with it. We can't, we can't, you know, as it grows, we grow. We've gotta, we gotta make sure that we have everything in place before that, so.
So we've got to be proactive, not reactive. Right, don't achieve. Proact.
Because it's been seven, eight years.
Yeah, we do need to do that.
That's something I'd like to emphasize too is.
Uh huh.
We need to have our P and Z take a look at the comprehensive plan and if you'd like. You can send me back to do a little bit more training as well. Because I think there are a couple of new members, I've met with most of them in the past, but I think we have a couple of new P and Z members that I have not provided any training for. And I wonder if that's kind of part of the problem is what's going on.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I, and I do, I do wanna, I, I think it was awesome to see the citizens come out.
Oh, yeah.
And, and to contact us, I mean, we talked several times, I mean, there were lots of phone calls, texts, people come and see us. I mean, it was awesome to see that this is something that they really wanted us to take a look at that and that's what needs to happen in the city.
One, one, one comment on that, a caution, and I feel like we, there was enough in the discussion tonight from the record. And from the comprehensive plan to base your decision on, so I think we're okay there. But I want to caution you that if people contact you outside of the public hearing, if they're sending you emails, they're intent, sending you texts. You can't rely on any of that in making your decision.
Sure.
Right? And I know we've discussed that before, I'm just repeating it, emphasizing it here because I'm sure you do get calls. It's, it's hard to, to separate that, but as long as you're basing your decision on what's in the comprehensive plan, what's in the, the record from the hearing, then you're good. Um, but just a reminder, don't let that extracurricular activities influence your decisions, right? And like I said, tonight, I felt like you, you, you mentioned it, but it really felt like you did try to stick to the minutes and to the comprehensive plan. And apply them two together to make your decision tonight, and I think it's justifiable.
Earl.
I, I agree a hundred percent of what Adam said. Uh, the thing is, we gotta take care of our citizens now. And take care of their needs and stuff and we're at, at a point where added stress would be really harmful. So I think we made the right decision tonight, so I thank the council and, and the department heads and everybody that, uh, had something to do with this. Appreciate it. That's all I have.
One thing I've got is I want to make sure that P and Z realizes how much we appreciate them. Um, I know some, I went and talked to a few of them and they felt bad about the decision they made. But they felt like their hands were tied and that's okay. Um, the Stacy Pasco philosophy is we're gonna make the, I'm gonna make the best decision I can make to help our community. And if people don't like that, what we do, they can vote us out. Where the P and Z is actually appointed, they're in a little bit different situation, so I appreciate everything that they do and, and stuff.
Yes, for sure.
Um, and I appreciate everybody doing their homework on this because that was a big thing. If, if we did our homework, then it was easy to come up with, you know, comparisons and stuff like that and why we should do things. So, so we need to make sure we always keep doing that, so, and I appreciate the department heads. Other than that, we will call this meeting adjourned.